Everyone, please stand to touch the flag and come on inside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no reason to injustice or wrong.
Yes, are you ready for the road call, Mr. Taylor?
Councilman Gagans?
Here.
Councilman LeBlak?
Here.
Councilman Kayler?
Here.
Acting Mayor, this morning?
Here.
All present in the county floor?
With four and one. Vacants, four present and vacant.
And business board?
Right.
And correspondents? Come on in.
That's true.
Okay. At this point, we request your motion to appoint a mayor to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mayor Ulrich for the remainder of the term ending December 31st, 2020. Is there a motion?
Before I make the motion, I just want to say that the two people that went for this are both council members that put in for this. I mean, it's high due respect for both council people. And it's an honor to actually serve with both. So please, this is not a duty badge or anything like that. And this is running the city of Shmoken. In the best interest that I feel, looking at our future, I'm going to motion for Mike McLaughlin as mayor.
Is there a second?
No, I'll say it.
Usually, you can do nominations, like when you have some nominations, second, then the other nomination, and I guess.
Are there any nominations?
I have my application.
Let's just say that. You guys get that? So we have a motion and a second. Same expression from this council. Okay. Sorry, folks.
Yes, you apologize. This is a little new to all of us. Yes, and following the vote, I will want to make a comment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, um, appoint Mike LeBlak and to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mayor Ulrich. Road call then, Mr. Gagans?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlak?
Just a comment before I vote. I struggled with this, with what I could do with this scenario played out tonight. Considering there's no support for another option, I'm going to embrace the confidence and support of the others and vote yes to this. I look to the opportunity to jumpstart and helping revitalize Shmoken and to bring it into the status quo. I know this may not set well with some, but I'm committed to prove to those that may not agree with me that this was a correct choice for moving Shmoken forward. A better Shmoken is my main goal. Thank you.
So you got it, Mike?
Yeah.
To log in now.
Okay. Mr. Kayler?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on one, two, three days on the, on the extension.
Right now, extension?
Okay, I just touched the extension.
No, that's, no.
Although, no, wait, you're jumping ahead. I have a statement to make. And I want to address, I also want to address my no vote to Councilman LeBlak. Since I also submitted a letter of interest, I thought that it would be disingenuous on my part to vote yes. And so therefore, that explains my vote quite certainly. Personally, it's just the way I felt things had to go under the circumstances. Just, this is a restatement that I felt also obligated to make, and here it is. The outcome of today's nomination and vote was certainly expected by me. It was apparent last month that council's mind was made up and not interested in considering a candidate with more experience on council. So why submit my own letter of interest? Quite frankly, I believe that my experience, work with the city, and determination to move Shmoken forward and do good, more than qualified me to aid the city and serve as acting mayor during this transition for the last several months until an elected mayor was certified and sworn into office. I certainly spent a great deal of time thinking about every aspect of submitting a letter of interest and concluded that I would be the most experienced candidate, as expressed in my letter. Thank you to everyone who reached out to me and supported me and then allowed me to reach my own decision. I appreciate every one of you and your encouragement. Equally importantly, I feel strongly that my request to be considered was also so a woman or anyone who may feel marginalized and stand up. So now, congratulations to my fellow councilmen and interim mayor and my friend, Councilwoman LeBlak, I pass the dapple to you.
You can just sit here.
You don't know where he said it.
He's just gonna sit up in there. I'll move it over. I'll move one over. After. This is Mark. I'm filling out for.
Do you want? I'm voting for Mike.
Five minutes, guys, to stand, tally, and clap.
You're in the white box.
I, Michael LeBlak.
I, Mike LeBlak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I discharge the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the city of Shmoken, Pennsylvania.
In the city of Shmoken, Pennsylvania. With Fidel.
If you can just sit down here.
Yes.
I don't think I know anything about that one.
What's that? A name thing.
Turn on the mute, tell the people stop.
Raven belongs to Ray Psycho, please from up here.
I think we have to now declare a vacancy. My reason was just a little.
Sorry about that. So due to the appointment of myself as mayor, that created a vacancy on city council. So we must accept a motion to accept my resignation from city council and open, that opens a vacancy for an appointment in the future.
So sometime council make a motion, please.
A motion.
I'll say. Councilman Gagans?
Yes.
Councilman Kayler?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
And Mayor LeBlak?
Yes.
We're gonna have to try to get this to the outside.
Get that, that's right, you're right.
The clock from today is the 30th day in the fourth. And give, you give. And that's all, I'm just saying, that's why we did it officially.
So that we advertise.
Mayor, you said.
Sure, sure. So at the same time, I'll ask for a motion to advertise the letters of interest for the vacant city council position for the remainder of 2025. And we have to do that, we will do that for our next meeting. Within 30 days.
A workshop?
I'm sorry, a workshop meeting? In council?
Yeah, so we'll leave that, man.
No, I think Mr. Gagans is asking, should, asking the council, should they do one workshop and then back on the next meeting? Is that, is that your motion?
That's exactly my message.
Well, that's, if you want to make that motion.
I'll make a motion that you accept.
That is an interest.
Letters of interest. Uh, deadline will be before our workshop session, which is before.
Before?
Somebody choose.
I'll second that.
So, two seconds.
Okay, so we're gonna start.
Councilman Gagans?
Yes.
Councilman Kayler?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor LeBlak?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, word is. Okay, the statements are ready. At this time, uh, calls for the swearing in of Officer Green and Thomas. Mr. Thomas, will you and Miss Gagans anticipate, please come forward?
You all ready?
Joe, we're gonna have to run this far through the center.
So, I am ready to promise to solemnly swear. Or affirm that I will support. Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this commonwealth. And that I will discharge the duties of a police officer. In the city of Shmoken, Pennsylvania. With Fidel.
They just hired out like 72 hours.
I'm not seeing, I'm sorry. I couldn't see, it's too. I need a little.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, next person to you will be the shade tree presentation by the Bucknell University students. You guys, and girls, come sit down.
Hi, everyone. We are students from Bucknell University. I'm Sky.
I'm Chloe.
I'm Marcus.
I'm Olivia.
And I'm Beth.
And we are all part of the environmental studies 411 class, where we work with different communities on environmental projects. And our project for the semester was working with the city of Shmoken with the goal of providing either a shade tree commission or better tree maintenance and kind of providing recommendations for the city of Shmoken. And we worked very closely with Mike Gagans and Matt McWoland, who are community partners, as well as Professor Woodin, who helped us along the whole way. And we are putting some of our findings today. And so, some of our secondary project goals that sort of fed into that main goal of researching this included researching other local shade tree commissions. So we talked to people from Lewisburg and Sunbury and trying to figure out how that would work in the city of Shmoken. And then we also edited an existing tree inventory and created a new tree map of the trees on Main Street and in the parks of Shmoken. We created some public education materials, and then we also gathered public opinion through attending sustainability meetings, performing interviews, and hosting a focus groups on shade tree opinions in Shmoken.
So to gather public opinion, we held a focus group right here at the city mall. Many participants agreed to the benefit of shade trees here in the city, but there were two significant concerns about tree maintenance and funding.
Um, so one of the other suggestions that came out of the focus group was to create an informal shade tree commission. Um, so then just to discuss the differences between a formal and informal shade tree commission. With a formal shade tree commission, you'd be able to use the shade tree tax from the city, um, to be able to help fund maintaining the trees. And in an informal shade tree commission, this would not be allowed because it wouldn't be an official government body. And then the other biggest difference was that if you don't have a formal shade tree commission, the members have less control over having a say in what the property owners do with their trees, so they would be able to send them notices or bill them for removing or maintaining their trees. But then overall, the biggest advice we received from some of our other interviews was that with either a formal or an informal shade tree commission, the community and city officials need to be as involved as possible since it is a lot of work. So for our recommendations, we believe that there should be efforts made to continue to spread awareness regarding the importance of shade trees in terms of their environmental, economic, and social benefits. Um, and we also created pamphlets with information relating to these benefits and information about shade tree commissions and shade tree commissions in general, and we're leaving them here in Shmoken for your use. Um, and this will hopefully lead to the continuation of awareness to the public about shade trees and their many benefits. And if more of the public is better informed on how shade trees can work towards improving the communities, and this could work towards progress on garnering interest among residents for becoming members of a shade tree commission or some other type of body. Um, and then the tree inventory that is currently in progress within the Treekeeper software should continue to be added to as this will be beneficial for grant applications in the future, since this is often a requirement for grants relating to trees and maintenance. And then we also believe that the focus at this point needs to be on existing trees instead of on new plantings, and there should be more concrete management and maintenance planned before adding more trees. So our final recommendation after all our research at this point is to further study the implementation of a commission and to see how the state and federal funding changes before officially implementing a shade tree commission. And overall, this is a long-term project that will take many years to come to fruition, but we hope that the background research and results that we found that are in the proposal there are beneficial in assisting city of Shmoken in developing the best possible approach to shade tree management. Thank you.
I just want to thank you guys working with Gagans and the passion that you're all so much. Ms. Warren was a teacher, so she gets her ass all the time. Anyway, uh, I've worked with huge students, which really enjoy, and I learned a lot with you in it, so. So, um, and I appreciate all the effort that you guys took, girls, to coming down here. Really. And I'm gonna miss you guys. Congratulations, uh, with your graduation. And, uh, and thank you for all the hard work, and I, I learned a lot, like, just listening to you guys throughout this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, grateful for everything you did.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're not required to stay with us. You're welcome to sit and watch how we operate, but you're not, uh, mandated to. Moving on, Mr. Mayor, uh, our bids for the contest for the municipal that we have advertised and, uh, we're accepting bids, the bids have been reviewed by our solicitor, and the first bid, we need a motion to accept the bid of Mark. I'm.
Bidget speak.
For the bid for the property at thirteen South H Street in the amount of one thousand five hundred and one dollars.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Taylor, second by Councilman Johnson.
On the question. Councilman Duganitz?
Yes.
Councilman Caleb?
Yes.
Councilman Weller?
Yes.
Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
The motion carries for days. That was just on the... Motion was made by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Duganitz. The next property that we have looking at. As we received a bid from David and Doran for a property at nine twenty-nine, nine thirty-one, Algena Street I have a shift in the amount of one thousand dollars. So...
Second.
Any other questions? Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
The motion carries for days. Stand... Proceeding with the next one.
Yeah, something contingent.
Now, the third property is... The motion to accept the bid of Steven Garantchesci for a property at ten South Rock Street, twelve South Rock Street, and fourteen South Rock Street in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. And this is being done contingent upon a letter of approval from... Have a motion?
I'll second.
Any question back under the council?
They were informed that this is, that they're unfortunately, because they, they got to tear these offices down, let's leave them alone. Yes, to them, okay. And because they are in a flood zone, they cannot erect another building. I mean, Mr. Garantchesci does know this, but I guess...
Yes, and even when they would do a pot session in Los Angeles, they're not... Just for the record, the city did have appraisals done for all the properties that were being advertised for sale. And just to do our due diligence, so these amounts are reasonable given the appraisal value that the city had received.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb? Mr. Caleb?
Yes. That's right.
Ms. Meyer?
I can...
And Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
For days? That motion passes, and that is... And that is all the bids. It's that were discussed at our workshop meeting last spring's date. So, now, I'm the mayor, which is move on to citizens' comments.
So, do we have any citizens' comments regarding any info or banners that are on the agenda?
It appears there are no comments. We will move down.
Okay, so we'll accept the motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting on April fourteenth. So... Okay, on the question. I just have one, one question or a, a, a word. Under the park from Seadecock, it says on here, while some residents may see flood insurance rate increases, rates will not quadrupled. That wasn't, that wasn't the statement. It was the area impacted would not quadrupled. So, just want to have that in correction a little minutes. Okay? So, I think we just need to change that one. So, that being said, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
We already got the motion.
Okay, one.
Yes, I got a motion, you say.
Okay, so roll call.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
The motion carries, and that is...
Okay, we need a motion to accept the bill list for payment?
Any question?
Yes, I have a couple. Now, is this the pension contribution? Is this doing a new program?
It's a CEU.
Yeah, Charles Quat, suspect.
So, they previously gave it nationwide. Now, you are all over this business for nationwide. It's all charged to Charles Quat. And because this was not done in time for payroll, it had to be, had to check, had to be manually written to Charles Quat. But that is not going to happen again. It will be processed through him.
Okay. The other thing is, the five hundred dollar, that's the cleanup. We get reimbursed for this one, correct, for the cleanup at the Ward Street.
And that is, if, if possible, through the courts, but...
Okay. All right, and then I had one other question, and that is in the Bucknell Bay, UGI Utilities Library Union. That, that's pretty hot, actually. And check number one, two, eight, four, up here, this unit building. Because I know that's coming out of my money or out of my budget. So, not my money, but out of the city's money, my budget. And I was just curious as to...
Mayor, I suggested that you talk to the ability. As I was saying, Mayor McLaughlin and I had a discussion about that. And some of you, such as the treasurer, the controllers, know that the the UGI bills are extremely high, particularly in the banner months. And I understand that we're out of the banner. But I assured them, and will include you. Because I don't have the bills, but you're okay. It is valid, and it is a certain... And discussed with you, then.
If you can just get a signature copy of that number. Thank you. So, these are the...
My three questions.
Okay, so roll call.
At one time, I was saying, it was two, it was recreation, but hey, because there wasn't enough money in the library.
Okay, we need to roll call.
Mr. Duganitz?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb?
Yes.
Ms. Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor McLaughlin?
Yes.
The directors of accounts, reports, accounts and finance.
Before I do that, I can ask you do you have a lease report by the law? And I'll fill in there, chief.
Would you like that?
No, no. You want it from there. I can actually, only read a lot on there.
Okay.
Okay, so what it has to do with...
I'll switch it up, okay?
All right, here is the treasurer's report. For the month of April twenty twenty-five, total general fund balance is one million sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total motor license balance, three hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Total library balance is one ninety, one hundred and ninety-five thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents. The total sinking fund number one balance is two hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Total sinking fund number two recreation balance is three hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Total street item balance is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Total American Legion balance, one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Total neighborhood mitigation fund, forty-five thousand six hundred and ten dollars and forty-five cents. Total parking department credit cards balance charges, five thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And the police department credit cards, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Our total balance in all accounts, two million three hundred and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
Thank you. Parks and public buildings.
Well, of course, great around here, and I just want to say thank you to the United Way of Action. We had forty-three streets in the school coming out, as well as adult volunteers that did the cleanup. They helped. The street department was really helpful in getting us a lot of mulch. You see that they really splooshed up the area. It was clearly a very United States action, you know? And you can see it, if you go downtown and see Market Street or any of the playgrounds, they did a great job. CSO and the Victory House, we did a food distribution on the same day as the Day of Action. And we gave, we gave out, we gave out help. The street includes ninety-six different households. That's over two hundred people were served. That was a tremendous job. It was from twelve to two. We're doing it again this coming Friday from twelve to two at Claude Taylor Park. If you go on the city's website, thank you, Michelle, for putting that on there on the city's website, Bill Chumoken, thank you, Justin. So, and you can get further information and look at income, population, qualifications. And you, all you have to do is register there. You do not have to re-register. You can register right there. Rosalind Kane Day was a success. Thank you, Justin, for helping out with that. And also the Metal Mania was a success. So, good things happened throughout the month of April. Coming up in May, like I said, the CSO for food distribution. That is this Friday coming up. Heritage State Festival, we don't know that that's one twenty, or twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth, okay. And then Memorial Day services on Memorial Day Monday, nine thirty a.m., will be the O'Reilly Race of Freedom to honor all our fallen soldiers. So, and that is at nine thirty in the morning, as the service starts. The pool is on schedule. Thank you to the street department, thank you to Kevin Richardson, and those guys, they work diligently, really hard to make sure that we're all ready for the, for the pool season this year. As well as the free lunch program, that's all set. That will be starting after when school ends, the free lunch program will start back at the pool again. As well as swim lessons, Betsy Richardson, oh, Betsy, sorry. Yeah, and I'm thinking Kevin Richardson, Betsy. Betsy Kramer helped work with the, with us another grad to do free swim lessons. And I believe that they went through, I'll get more information about that again. So, we're bringing that program back. They're looking to find if anybody would like to do sponsored swims. I know a lot of people call them free swims. We call them sponsored swims. So, if anybody would like to sponsor a free swim, please let the pool know and they would be happy to give you the information on that. Other than that, happy Memorial Day and happy Goodland, Mother's Day, Ms. Meyer, Scandal, and all the moms out there, happy Goodland, Mother's Day. Thank you. That's it.
So, street and public improvements. On the street department side of it, I wore that hat for the month. The pool is about three quarters ready. They still have to paint and fill it, but at the same time, the locker rooms are pretty much done and ready to go. We have new signs. Not sure if they're installed, but they were done for the Sunbury Street Playground. Most of the mulching is done, which Councilman Johnson had referred to. All the hometown hero banners are up. Brass cutting is in full swing. The waterline project on the independent street is supposed to start approximately two weeks. That one, there'll be more information out as we receive it on the dates and the locations. And on the street department part of it, I would be more than happy to continue that for thirty days. I don't know how that works, but I'm just running that out there wild, so it's very important that I could have no problem continuing that until we get a replacement. Yes, I have no problem with that.
I'm informing the secretary to let the records show that Mayor McLaughlin has volunteered to remean as far as the contact person for that not stepping aside that's making me just feel responsible.
Yeah, I will just, I'll just take over or take care of all the minimums.
There's that, okay?
Okay, so that pays us to public safety. All right, so for we have small fire. So, for one, we have the small fire room report. It's a major, it's a fire, three and eight. Rescue and emergency medical, we have hazardous condition, means nine. Service call four. We're in tenth call twelve. False alarm and false call nine. Instant pipe is one, which is a total of forty-eight. And for the code enforcement monthly report for April, we have rental revenue is one thousand four hundred and fifty. Rental registration is one thousand four hundred and fifty. Parking permit is two thousand seventy dollars. Other permit, six thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. We have dumpster permit is four hundred and seventy-five. Federal's permit is one fifty. Only permit is thirty. Third-party inspector is three thousand one hundred and fifty-seven. Estimating permit is one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. Mechanical devices is one thousand two hundred and ninety. Code violation is seventy-five. For call revenue collection is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. For code enforcement, five fifty. The tickets issued is one. Complaints addressed is nine hundred and thirty-eight. Notice of violation sent is thirty-eight. Detention rate is sixty-four. Landlord inspection completed nine. Posted unfit is four. Fire calls is four, warrants is twenty-three. And the only other thing I have is, for the meeting, are we are we going to go to the other building or are we staying here? Or what's? What's our plans for last?
If it's council's desire, we can, we can go over it. We would also have the place, place which we can talk a little bit about.
We would also have the place, uh, place which we can talk a little bit about and, uh, provide some changes.
Okay, I think we can talk about that maybe in our next workshop a little bit more in depth, just to see how well that little building will function for us. Um, I love the accessibility part of it, but it may not be big enough to, not that this is an average, but at the same time. Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that at the next workshop, okay, thank you. So, your call.
Uh, Mayor, I have nothing for council to make any decision on, but if I could have a mention for the Department of Home Rule Commission.
You sure can.
Okay, thank you, uh, I have some, as long as the newspapers here, we have five of our board members are here and council, obviously here. Uh, the next Home Rule Study Commission meeting will be Monday, June second at six PM, third city hall. The Home Rule Commission is then required to have at least one public hearing. And we are planning to have that hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, unless there's a conflict with the county's, uh, use of the career center. At that public hearing, it is not a Home Rule Commission meeting per se, so there will be no decisions made or no debate. It's purely to have a tax-paying public, homeowners, taxpayers, retired people in Schmoke, come and have their, uh, testimony recorded, uh, officially for the Home Rule Commission's, uh, records and, uh, for bestaries, safety for transparency. Okay, so we have Tuesday, June twenty-fourth. We will then have to meet on Monday, July seventh to go over the transcripts of the public hearing. And that was it, uh, Monday, July seventh, and that will be a regular, uh, Home Rule Commission meeting where we can make decisions and debate and, uh, discuss things. Two more days, the draft charter must be submitted to the county election board by August fifth. Our solicitor attorney, Greco, is, uh, and Bob is working on, uh, missing truth, I think, but I guess, for the board of election. Okay, keep it up, uh, I don't want to keep much more in time, so the draft charter must be submitted by August the fifth. And as of September fourth, uh, no more changes can be made to the charter. Uh, the public has to have at least sixty days of a solid.
How completed?
Charter to go on until then, so I hope I got all those things correctly for the newspaper. I wanted to take that chance to, uh, address that, and thank you for giving me the time.
You're welcome, thanks for giving us the report. Treasure.
I have nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, you can please. I apologize, you're. What?
I said that you have to stop, just stop.
Okay, I have to apologize, I had a little incident at home, so bear, bear with me. I mean, and before it gets out of control, my dog took me out accidentally. You know, I wasn't, had a major incident or mugged or whatever, my dog took me out, so, uh, a couple of things before we move on, um. Madam Mayor, thank you for your short time, that interest of you, I just want to say that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to welcome you. Uh, real quick, on the new business, I just want to touch on real fast here, is number two, number three, number four, and number six. They involve our police department. Real quick, I want to thank council, I want to thank Mr. Slavy with the recommendation to, um, give a raise to some of our employees at our police department. I, I truly appreciate that, it goes a long way. Also, the second parking enforcement officer, uh, again, I, I really think it would benefit from that, so thank you again for listening and confronting with that, guys, I truly do. And then on the good news, um, we met with three, top three candidates, who did our civil service testing. And, uh, number six would be for often them a conditional employment with the city. Uh, they excelled in all aspects, they did very, very well, and I, I think the three, they're going to be three very good candidates for, for the department. So with that being said, if everything goes okay in November, when these officers graduate, this will be the highest staff our police department since two thousand nine. So, thank you, thank you so much. I, I was here with it, and I, I truly appreciate everything you've done to make that happen, so thank you so much. Now, with that being said, Mr. Mayor has my report to read because I can only talk for so long. And then on official business, Mr. Mayor, I may follow my report, if no one from council has any questions for me. If I can be excused, and I apologize in advance again. So, I will read the chief's report. So juvenile petitions five, criminal complaints thirty-eight, non-traffic citations one, traffic citations fifty-six, traffic warnings three, parking tickets, tickets three hundred and forty-six, parking citations one, sweeper tickets four hundred and thirty-five, co, co-tickets nine. Total county cash calls eight hundred and five, total calls for the month, one thousand one hundred and forty-five, mileage control, three thousand one hundred and six. So does anyone have any questions for the chief, so he can gladly go home now. And if anybody wants to sign lightly, we can. But we'll pass on that one, chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you council, if you need anything, call me, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Take care, guys, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have, not sure, Justin, do you have anything from Cidacod?
Uh, no, she recently, she's back from, uh, Scotland, so she didn't, she doesn't have to.
Okay, so then our downtown manager?
Yes, I don't have nothing graphic breaking to share right now, I did submit the list of lighted properties that I've been working on to Keystone Four Services for the citywide light inventory. And then, uh, I've been working really hard on the Independence Day events for downtown, that's coming along very well, uh. I received five thousand dollars from Saskatchewanville, Saskatchewan Valley River Visitors Bureau. And that's going to give us some bounce houses for the kids and light music for everyone. And that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, yes. Do we have, Tom, Tom is not, that'll be, that's going to be the end of your session. So next we'll have the approval of our events list. Yes.
Can we take a quick, exactly the session, I want to discuss certain matters that maybe, um, possible people that have been very much in the future. Let me take five minutes, you all, uh, like I started talking about, so we just go back. So, you're asking for potential evaluations, okay, we'll just move on to my, please.
Okay, folks, we're back. The event is session is over. We're gonna reach the D here at 7:07. And we'll move into the events part of our list.
Okay, uh, counsel, my recommendation, I request the motion to table number one on the event list. So, most.
I'm second.
Okay, so my.
Okay, we'll need a roll call.
Okay, is there any need for discussion, council members? No? Okay. Uh, Mr. DeGennets?
Yes.
Mr. Kayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatman?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. And then the mayor will go.
You're gonna do two through 12. Yes, through 12.
Okay. On the event form, we leave the motion.
Come on.
For items.
Okay, through 12. A motion by Mr. Kayler for items two through 12. Is there a second? Mrs. Moyer on the second. And behind the question.
Yes. Uh, on number four, number eight, and number 10, uh, looking to the open container suspension for those days. One is for the independent zone independence block party. We have that all the time. And the other two are at the illumination station. They're painting sets. Uh, I guess that that's they do they do painting and they drink wine at these things. It's just a little formal thing that they're doing. So, uh, just the open container. Uh, there's, but it's going to be at the illumination station. It will be just inside of illumination station, so.
In our justice, you can verify independence and independence, correct?
Yes.
That should have the open container.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that justice.
Yes.
Okay. Just one moment. So would you amend your motion to include those open container provisions in those numbers as Mr. DeGennets said?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer, which is.
I'm, I'm fine.
That's all right.
Include that open container provision.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor and the second. Any other questions? Okay, and we're adding the open container to four, eight, and 10. Roll call, please.
Mr. DeGennets?
Yes.
Mr. Kayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
New business. Do we remember taking one at a time?
Mr. DeGennets. My recommendation of solicitor to leave a motion. New business for number one through six. As listed in the agenda list.
A motion on one through six as listed, please. Does anyone have, does anyone have a problem with joining one through six?
Should be one through five and six, I think.
No? Okay, and also somebody's gonna, oh, sorry, some of them.
Okay, so we have a motion.
For one to six.
For one to six. By the council of Illinois and the second by councilwoman Moyer.
Any need for discussion?
Just a point of clarification. I think number five would be find out five dollars per hour in addition to regular drink.
That is correct.
Right, just for.
Right.
Okay, to the justice.
Yes.
I think the interpretive position itself is five dollars, but then if it's performed by another person, you know, that's in addition to what they are the positions.
Okay, right.
Yes, I didn't hear you though. So the interpretive position itself is five dollars, but if it's performed by their sports staff, so that's they're receiving five dollars for interpreting, they're also receiving no regular drinks.
So the five dollar is a plus or yeah, tribal plus or yes.
Do we have an employee for this or is this a new position?
No.
What? Sure. Yeah, I didn't know. This is the worst I've seen.
Five dollars, they help with training over at police stations or something.
Yeah, I know, so whatever. And in my office.
Yes.
I'm the one who stands. So I appreciate it.
Okay, do we have, do we have any questions? If not, then roll call.
Mr. DeGennets?
Yes.
Mr. Kayler?
Long over, do a yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Can you bring the second one?
Yep, unfinished. Do we have anything under unfinished?
Not at this time. The same way as with the.
Okay, you're, I mean, working on that just a little. Okay, just solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. First on the agenda would be a first reading of the ordinance 25-02. An ordinance to the city of Shiloh in Odomon County, Pennsylvania, to amend the city of Shiloh Uniform Construction, Construction Code. Require issuance of permits for certain accessory structures and for certain alterations or repairs to residential buildings. Whereas the city of Shiloh can issue to amend the city of Shiloh Uniform Construction Code ordinance to require issuance of permits for certain accessory structures and for certain alterations or repairs to residential buildings and therefore be obtained by the council of the city of Shiloh as follows. It's actually one purpose of intent without reading the entire paragraph, uh, basically just you cover the Pennsylvania has granted additional leeway for municipalities to add these sections to the uniform construction code. Section two, the city of Shiloh can uniform construction code, administered by amended, amended adding sub-sections which shall provide as follows. In addition to all types on construction placement of structures, repairs, and alterations for which the uniform construction code requires a permit, the city pursuant to the authorization of Act 92 of 2004 requires persons to obtain permits for the following, A, the construction or actual replacement of any building structure which is equal to or greater than 300 square feet, the placement of said accessory structure is located less than three feet from the related property line, whether or not such accessory structure is connected to any utility. B, the construction or actual replacement of any accessory structure which is less than 300 square feet, if such accessory structure is provided with any utility service, electric, water, or heating, cannot obtain permanent for the purpose of inspection for the utility or utilities being installed or provided to the accessory structure. C, the removal of any portion of the common party wall or ceiling, floor, assembly, separate, and two or more separate buildings shall be as follows. This section shall, shall include the removal of wall coverings which reveals common framing members whether low bearing or not. Said wall and or floor ceiling assembly shall be replaced in the manner that provides a one-hour fire separation to include fire, fire blocking, ceiling, caulking, and insulation. Alternatively, any assembly provided and approved by approved standardization authority for sealed by, or sealed by a registered design professional shall be exempted. As well, having one of that extrinsic system shall be exempted in this section. Fee any and all electric work to include but is not limited to the replacement of service equipment, conductors, devices, and fixtures, if fixtures are not an exact replacement. Electric work pertains to electricity provided by the electric utility provider starting at the point of delivery to and through these structures and termination points. These same regulations apply to separate visual line systems. Replace for the vent portion of roof coverage which is continuous adjacent structures. Further, the addition of roof coverage to existing roof coverage shall be deemed to affect the structure and therefore construction permits required. The following are exemptions, replacement of windows and doors where there is no changes in size of the existing opening. Bring roof any of less than 25% of the total existing roof square footage. Replace with a pot water heater, boiler, or furnace if replacement of any part. These are the same efficiency rating electrical and plumbing requirements. Additional replacement of siding and exterior of the residential structure. Repair or replacement of any nonstructural portion of the deck, porch, or stoop. Replacement of any appliance, switch, or receptacle with the switch or receptacle which is the same or has like rating. Addition of any appliance, switch, or receptacle. Repair or replacement of any nonstructural member. Repair or replacement of any steam closet, hot shower, or similar plumbing fixture without relocation of any joint or venting device. Any parts of city ordinance which are inconsistent, uh, are hereby repealed. This will take effect within 10 days.
We haven't said no, come on once. I'm proof.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the change to. Motion by Mrs. Moyer.
I'll second.
One more question?
Mr. DeGennets?
Yes.
Mr. Kayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer? Mayor Blatman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, whatever I, I believe based on, uh, requirement, uh, the city is obligated to develop and establish a whistleblower policy. Purpose of a whistleblower policy is to be sure that an employee that imports or alleged able or improper activity do not get discriminated against or lose their job. Uh, example of this is when employees saw one of employees parking motorola and stores something crazy like that and they brought it to our attention. Um, this is a whistleblower policy being established by the city of Shiloh in Odomon County. Uh, the city of Shiloh will not retaliate against the whistleblower. This includes but is not limited to protection from retaliation in form of an adverse employee action such as termination, compensation decreases or poor work assignments, and threats of physical harm. Any whistleblower who believes he or she has been retaliated against must contact the city administrator immediately. Right of a whistleblower for protection against retaliation is not included immediately, granted personal wrongdoing as alleged and investigated. Whistleblower protections are provided in two important areas, confidentiality and retaliation. Insofar as possible, the confidentiality of the whistleblower will be maintained. However, identity can have to be disclosed to conduct a thorough investigation to comply with the law and to provide accused individuals their legal rights and defense. Individuals protected include employee or person acting on behalf of the employee who reports to a public body who was about to report to a public body in a matter of public concern or the employee who participates in court action, investigation, hearing, or inquiry held by a public body on a matter of public concern. The city of Shiloh may not discharge stragglers otherwise discriminating against an employee regarding the employee's compensation terms, conditions, location, or privileges of employment. The city of Shiloh may not disqualify an employee or the person who brings a matter of public concern who participates in a proceeding connected to a matter of public concern before a public body or court because of the report of participation, the mention of eligibility to bid on contracts. The city of Shiloh can receive land, uh, under an ordinance or receive legal rights, privileges, or benefit. This policy do not require the city to compensate an employee for participation in court action or an investigation hearing or inquiry, prevent the city from compensating an employee for that participation in court action hearing or court. Authorize the disclosure of information that is legally required to be kept confidential to diminish or impair the rights of an employee and reflect the bargaining agreement. Limitations to protections, a person is not entitled to the protections of this policy unless she or she is reasonably believed that the information reported is or is about to become a matter of public concern and reports the same in good faith. The person is entitled to the protections under this policy only if a matter of public concern is not the result of the conduct by an individual seeking protection, unless it is the result of conduct on the person that was required by his or her employer. Before an employee initiates a report to a public body on a matter of public concern under this policy, the employee shall submit a written report concerning the matter to the city administrator, or if the employee is not required to submit a written report if he or she believes the feasible certainty that the activity policy or practice is already known to the chief executive officer for that an emergency is involved. The person who alleges a violation, a very civil action, court may grant appropriate relief. Procedures of an employee's knowledge of a concern or illegal dishonest fraudulent activity, the employees can contact his or her meeting supervisor or the city administrator. All reports of concerns of illegal and dishonest activities will be promptly submitted by the receiving supervisor to the city administrator who is responsible for investigating and coordinating any necessary corrective action. Any concerns involving the city administration should be reported to the chief executive officer, which in essence is the neighbor. Whistleblower not responsible for investigating the alleged legal or dishonest activity or for determining fault or corrective measures. Examples of illegal or dishonest activities include violations of federal, state, and local laws, failure of services not performed with the best type of literature, and others filed with financing reporting. Employee must exercise sound judgment to avoid basis allegations. Employee who intentionally files a false report or wrongdoing will be subject to disciplinary action. Definitions, whistleblower is defined as a person who reports the want or more of the party specified an activity that he or she considers to be illegal, dishonest, unethical, or otherwise improper. Employee or public employee showing a person who performs service for wages or other reiteration of the contract of hire rate or oral, which is questioned by matter of public concern means violation of state, federal, municipal law, regulation, ordinance, danger to public health or safety, personless management, substantial negligence, or clear abuse of the party. Public body includes an officer or agency, the federal government, the state, a political subdivision of the state, county, municipality, or state, or public university, or city, or finally the city of Shiloh.
What's that? End of mouth there?
If you'd like, if you mind, you can make that happen. You can make that again. So I can back up one more.
Can, uh, can we accept the motion? Motion. Anything on the question?
Mr. DeGennets?
Yes.
Thank you for. Mr. Kayler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Blatman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. I have nothing further, Mr. Moyer, counsel.
Thank you. Citizen Congress. And when you do come up, please make sure you sign the paper of somebody else's here, okay, and let us know your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Alvin. A U M A M.
What's your first name?
Colleen. Who else? Who is? I live at Southern North Marshall Street.
Okay.
Um, to be fair, uh, I'm not really sure if this is a platform or where, but I am seeking help. if this is a platform or where, but I am seeking help. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, I moved into my dad's house after he passed away. Um, the neighbors in the state of that street have been occurring in constant state of chaos and disaster in mass. Um, I've been down here, I have filed complaints. Um, I've been told in so many words that at some point my dad himself is the actual problem because of all the complacency he has made. Um, moving forward, the home next to me is atrocious, it smells, there's garbage bags upon garbage bags at any given point in time. Um, there are several animals inside that home that have been removed, but they are back. I think there's about nineteen to twenty people living in the home that are currently on probation and parole. Um, while I was in Nashville a month ago, I got a phone call from one of my other neighbors about taking my dog in from out back, and at that point, my mother-in-law was staying at the house, my husband's also deceased, and my mother as well. So I'm an orphan and a widow, and I'm living up here. I need you all to know that I have worked in juvenile justice for nineteen years in a secure facility, and I currently work at LCI monthly. I have not in twenty years feared for my safety in those positions, but when I come home, I do. I do not feel supported, I have been to the police, I have been down here, I have talked to codes. Nothing has changed, which brings me to yesterday when I was out in my backyard, because it's the only place I feel safe or that smells and looks remotely appealing. Mowing my grass, when my neighbor's dogs came out and two pit bulls jumped over my fence and attacked my fourteen-pound Shishan puppy. To the point where I screamed so loudly and my dog was yelping that neighbors five houses down and three houses down also came over, hopped the fence to get into my yard. Now, Lord willingly, and probably under the protection of my mother on Mother's Day, my dog made it with a two-hundred-dollar vet bill with a twenty percent off discount because I just happened to meet up with somebody that worked there. Money I will never receive back from those neighbors because they are never held accountable. There's probably nine thousand dollars in citations of loan, police and parole are there probably two to three times at minimum per week. I don't know where else to go at this point. There is so much more I could say, their, their roof has fallen, it fell into my patio, I was told by the police, they have no homeowners insurance, that basically it would come down to me, I would end up paying more. If I wanted to file a civil suit, I can, but in the end, I'm not going to receive anything. I'm going to be paying money out of my pocket as a single woman because they can't take care of their property, to the point that I almost lost my dog, and maybe y'all think it's just a dog, well, she's all I have left. To sit there and put myself in between pit bulls yesterday, I have not received a single apology. My neighbors frankly said something today. Did anybody in that home apologize? And when they walked by, they said they were sleeping and it's not their fault. And that they did not care. They were just caught shooting guns at the dogs across the yard from me, through my yard, by my pool. Again, arrested and nothing. I am just at my wit's end, I should not have to come home to this, I shouldn't be working in a prison and not ever be fearful. But to come home to my own house and finally be fearful, and resilient, it'll be. I am strong and I don't ask for help. But at this point, something needs to change, and I don't know where to go, I don't know who to turn to, but if this is where I need to start, then this is where it's got to be.
Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, you came to the right place. Okay, we will get your phone number. Mr. Sladey will set up an appointment between yourself and the chief of police. Um, if I can make it, I'm going to be there or set the appointment up when I can be there. And if we can have the code office there at the same time, I'll make sure that happens.
Um, Colleen, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What, uh, you live at seven North Marshall?
Yes, I do.
Is it five or not?
Nine.
Nine North Marshall? And how many animals do they have, two pit bulls?
So there's two pit bulls that crossed into my yard, they jumped there in fact, there's two other dogs that were all shot at the same time, but they.
In the same house?
There's approximately, I think, at least ten dogs in that home, eight.
Ten dogs?
Eight. Thank you.
Needless to say, to apologize for the mess, but we will do whatever we can to help you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And just come up afterwards so we can get your phone number.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Justice Storm, Brokers Realty, thirteen ten West Wallbury Street, Old Township. Uh, property owner of multiple properties in Chillicothe. Uh, concerns with the new code that we look into past, construction code. Um, a couple of those issues that I see with legislation. One, should require a contractor to pull the permit. So many times, we have local homeowner come in to pull the permit and, uh, what's it cost? Thousand dollars, here's your ten dollars, you know, and it's really not the way, if, if the job is a five thousand, ten thousand dollar job. Um, the other part, the other side of that thing is, we're, we're not a homeowners association, we're a city. So I think we want to look a little closer at what we're putting on paper and doing. First, my, my biggest concern is, we don't charge for roofs today. And if we look around our town, look around our community, how many roofs need to be put on? So now we're going to put another obstacle in the middle of that? I, I think we should adopt a policy more similar to some of the larger towns where roofs, windows and doors, you can go down in size, not up in size, for windows and doors, which I believe is our current policy on windows and doors. You can go down, you can't make them bigger without pulling a permit and having an engineer's report done on it. Because you've got to change your headers and, and stuff like that, it's more complex. Uh, but my concern is roofs, I mean, if, if you've got a roof that starts leaking in the middle of the winter and you're up there shoveling snow off the roof, and it's a Saturday afternoon, and you're trying to fix your roof, I, I, I mean, I, I, I think the best way to do it is to wait a month to pull a permit. Uh, you know, again, when, when we start talking about siding, siding is not a a, a contracting type of work to be done, it's a, it's a covering on the property. It's, it's a facade. Um, I, I don't think that we should be pulling permits to put siding up on a house because it's a facade.
But that, the siding was exempt.
It, it, I thought you read that off as you were reading the whole thing.
Yeah, you might just, you might have just skipped right that part.
I, I mean, but I, I think we need to look.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm up to, if our circuit extensions contain in that ordinance, siding, and siding was specifically included in that?
Yeah, and I know your window, your window part there, you said was, if, if it's not going bigger, or if it was staying the same size, the opening was staying the same size.
Right.
Um, but I mean, generally, most communities, if, if you're putting a smaller window in, because we have a lot of homes around here that have a hundred and seven-inch tall window currently, and people will then box that window in, you're not changing structural to the house, you're boxing it in, you're putting, uh, zip board up around, and you're making a smaller opening and putting a more standard-sized window in today. So, I mean, I, I think we want to look at, kind of what we're actually asking for, especially roofs. The other part is, when you're talking about structures. Uh, a lot of folks buy buildings that are already built off-site and they're, and they're put on, on the property. Nobody, nobody generally calls for a permit for having a shed dropped over their property. Uh, in, in my experience, in a lot of communities, I mean, we don't see shed permits to put a, 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 put a shed up on somebody's property because it's already been built off-site to state, state standards, and it is being trucked down the road at a, a class-three hurricane wind force hitting it, and that being put down. And all I ask is that we review this legislation carefully and bear in mind that we're not a homeowners association, we're a city.
I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I would like to say congratulations to Mr. McLaughlin. Um, a little spin-off from my neighbor Colleen, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Tracy Katraski, twenty North Marshall Street. Um, you are no stranger to this particular home or the occupants. Um, it, it is every good as horrendous as she has stated, if not more. Um, basically what happened is this is just a spin-off from what happened on my side, all they did was go from there across the street. While I am greatly appreciative of what you have done and code has done on my side, it just traveled across the street. So I don't want you to think that I'm not appreciative of what has taken, you know, place up there. Um, but again, the problem only moved.
So you're saying the same people?
Yes, they moved, they went across the street and moved in with those other people. So Marshall Street at that end, if you could get rid of those two homes, would eliminate ninety percent of your police calls to Marshall Street. Because that is the main existence, those two homes, they've always been. And, and, and that's just the way it is. Um, but again, I am grateful for what has taken place already from when I was here. Uh, they, they do have at least eight dogs. Um, my other thing is the mini bikes. Uh, they are horrendous. They come from Art Street, Burke Street, and I guess Marshall right there on the other side, correct? But they are up and down our street. Uh, kid, school-age kids, uh, flying, I, I have videos, um, up and down, up and down, a thousand times a day. And I've watched almost three accidents where they, because they're going up the wrong way on a one-way street, first of all. So anybody that's coming off a chestnut around on Marshall is, something very bad is going to happen. And unfortunately, it seems that something very bad has to happen for something to take place, to get action.
Mrs. Katraski, I, where my office is located, I have a view from down here to up there. And I, in, in the police's defense, they are making a real, real effort in pulling them over. Today, in my office, the way my office is situated, I witnessed the police three times chasing people up there. The word's got to get out, eventually they're going to get you.
Right.
And I, I know what.
I don't want to be on my porch and see a kid hit head-on and be slaughtered in front of me. That's not something I want to witness.
I certainly will pass this on because we're at the max now.
Yes.
Uh, I'll pass it on, your concerns to the chief of police or the officer in charge tomorrow morning, but.
Thank you, Mr. Sladey.
In their defense.
I'm not saying that they're not doing anything, I'm just bringing it to your attention that.
It's scary, it's like you see it coming down, and it's like, and you hear the car, the cars coming up.
Yes.
And I sit there thinking, it's going to be a collision.
Yeah, and I don't want to see it, I don't, I don't.
They started to fly away from the cops, so they.
Well, unfortunately, Marshall Street is like the direct pathway to the cemetery out to the path. So, you know, that, they use it, but I'm worried about, these are just middle school kids, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids. Sometimes there's adults, but they're just little. And like I said, I don't want to be the one to witness a kid get smashed.
Thank you, and we, we will pass that on to the chief to have him look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Mayor, perfect.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment.
Well, there you go. I'll start.